Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I was about to call the meeting to order, but I noticed we're not on the air. Okay, now we're on the air. So, we're going to call the meeting to order. It is 7:00 PM. It's Tuesday, October 18th, and this is the Richfield City Council. If you're able, please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the body of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, eighth, okay. All right, so it's October 8th. Have to be more precise here. Is there anyone that has turned in a form for open forum that wish, is anyone wishing to speak? Is there anybody online? If you are listening and you want to call in for open forum, you can do so by dialing You would use webinar access code 2862-762-4013 and password 1234. Now, we're going to have a number of public hearings later in the meeting, so if you're speaking to a specific public hearing, save that for then. If you want to talk about a different matter that's not on the agenda, we'd welcome your input now. So, if there's anyone here that would like to speak. At this point, seeing that there's no one there and no one here, we'll keep moving forward. If someone calls in at the last minute, we can always take their input at that point. So, we'll move on to the approval of the minutes of the City Council Work Session of September 24th, 2024, and the City Council Meeting of September 24th, 2024.
Can I move approval?
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any input or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, we have passed the minutes. Is there someone here to receive the proclamation, or should I do it from up front here?
I'm unaware if anybody's here.
Oh, you are here, oh, good. Good, good, good.
Thank you.
Want to introduce yourself from the Human Rights Commission?
Hello, I'm Maddie Vokson. I'm a teacher and I'm also on the Human Rights Commission.
Thank you for receiving the proclamation. This is a proclamation of the City of Richfield, where Indigenous Peoples' Day is a celebration of the cultures, lands, and languages of Indigenous peoples throughout the land in which the United States is built on, and where as the Dakota and Anishinaabe people have lived in the ancestral lands of Minnesota for thousands of years, including the land of the City of Richfield, and where as Indigenous peoples have served courageously throughout our history and all aspects of our society, and deserve to be recognized and respected for all their contributions, and where as Minnesota is home to countless Indigenous leaders, including Winona Leduc, Louis Erdrich, and Clyde Bellicourt, and where as Mary Kunisch is the first Indigenous Minnesota State Senator, and where as the state of Minnesota is honored to have Peggy Flanagan serve as our Lieutenant Governor representing White Earth Nation, and where as the City of Richfield confirms its commitment to supporting, uplifting, and honoring Indigenous peoples to ensure a better future for all members of our community. Now, therefore, I, Mary Supple, Mayor of Richfield, on behalf of the Richfield City Council, do hereby proclaim October 14th, 2024, as Indigenous Peoples' Day in Richfield, and call on the people of Richfield to observe this period with appropriate programs, activities, and ceremonies, and continue to honor the contributions of Indigenous Native Americans throughout the year, proclaim this eighth day of October, 2024. Did you want to say anything?
I just want to say, thank you for having me here tonight. On behalf of the Human Rights Commission, we are very happy with the proclamation, and we are here to support our community.
Thank you. Thank you. Next, we'll move on to approval of the agenda.
Move approval?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We have approved the agenda. Moving next, we will go to the consent calendar, and I'll turn it over to City Manager Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor. The consent calendar contains several separate items which are acted upon by the City Council in one motion. Once the consent calendar has been approved, the individual items and recommended actions have also been approved. No further council action on these items is necessary. On tonight's consent calendar, item A, consider the first reading of an ordinance amending City Code Section 427, Wetland Protection, to add new buffer requirements compliant with the Minnehaha Creek Watershed District Wetland Protection Rule, and clarify the decision-making and appeals process for Wetland Conservation Act decisions. Item B, consider approval for a temporary on-sale intoxicating liquor license for the Blessed Trinity Catholic School located at St. Richards Catholic Church, 7540 Penn Avenue South, for their annual gala taking place December 7th, 2024. Item C, consider the first reading of an ordinance amending City Codes Sections 428, 429, and 620 pertaining to erosion and sedimentation control, water resource management, and well drilling. Item D, consider the adoption of a resolution authorizing acceptance of the Office of Traffic Safety Funds for an extension of an original four-year grant to fully fund an officer dedicated to DWI enforcement in Richfield. Item E, consider the adoption of a resolution to accept a grant of $5,509.36 from the Office of Justice Programs for Bulletproof vests. Item F, consider adoption of a resolution accepting grants funds from the state of Minnesota to prepare a federal grant application and execute agreement number 1057886 with the Minnesota Department of Transportation for fund dispersal. Item G, consider a first reading of an ordinance amendment establishing zoning regulations for cannabis businesses. Item H, consider approval of a bid tabulation and award, a contract to Ron Casa Construction, Inc., for the 2024 citywide concrete project in the amount of $107,780, and authorize the city manager to approve contract changes up to, I'm sorry, under $175,000 without further city council consideration. And finally, item I, consider approval of an amendment to the contract with HGA Architects for the Wood Lake Nature Center building project in the amount of $181,500 to provide additional professional services, clarify basic architectural service details, and authorize the mayor and city manager to execute the amendment. And I submit all of these items for your consideration as part of the consent calendar.
Is there a motion to accept the consent calendar?
So, moved?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to accept the consent calendar items. Are there any comments, questions? It looks like a very concise list, but I know a lot of time and effort went into applying for all the grants and negotiating all the contracts and all of that stuff. So, thank you to everybody who had a part in putting together these items, because I know it took a lot of effort, and it's going to bring a lot of value to our city. All right, all in favor of approving the consent calendar, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We have approved the items on the consent calendar. We're going to have a series of public hearings, and what will happen is we'll listen to the report and have staff give us information, then we'll open the public hearings for each item, then we'll listen to the input that the public has, then we'll close the public hearing and vote on the items, and we'll do that several times in a row. Starting with item number five, I'll turn it over to Councilmember Hayford O'Leary.
Thank you. This is a public hearing to consider resolution adopting proposed assessment for unpaid garbage collection services from private property within the residential organized collection system from July 1st, 2023, to June 31st, 2024. Garbage recycling, organics, and yard waste services for most residential properties in the city is provided through the city's organized collection program established in 2001. The city requires services to be provided by the haulers even if a resident has not paid their service bills, as not having waste picked up is a public health concern. As a result of this requirement, the city agreed to take on the assessment process to resolve unpaid balances. As of October 1st, 2024, city staff has determined the actual assessment costs of unpaid garbage collection services to be $162,892.52. This amount will continue to be adjusted as assessments are paid by owners or residents before being sent to the county. I know for each of these, we do have a phone-in option, so if I could ask the tech to put the information on the screen for the phone-in option for the public hearing, and if anybody is in person to speak to a garbage-related assessment, please come forward now. And while we give just a minute online, could staff just describe, I think this would apply to all of them, how they could prepay the assessment before it actually goes to property tax if somebody does have an outstanding balance?
Yes, so, they can pay it a variety of ways. They can come in and pay it, they can send a check in and pay it. It needs to be paid by November 15th in order for it not to be sent to the county for certification.
One point of clarification, Mayor and Council, garbage assessments do need to be paid directly to the hauler. The city does not accept payment for garbage assessments. So, if folks have questions on which hauler services their property, they can give the city a call, and we can help connect them with the correct hauler for their address. But we do not take payment for garbage assessments.
Okay, is the deadline the same for paying the hauler, November 15th?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, and again, nobody in the room would like to speak to a garbage assessment, correct? And I don't think we've received any callers, correct, City Clerk? Okay, I will move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to close the public hearing. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We've closed the public hearing.
I move that we adopt a resolution adopting the assessments for costs incurred for unpaid garbage collection services between July 1st, 2023, and June 30th, 2024.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, we have approved that resolution. Next, we'll move on to item number six. Councilmember Christiansen.
Thank you. This is to adopt a resolution for special assessments for removal of diseased trees from private property for work ordered from January 1st, 2023, through December 31st, 2023. The health of trees within municipal limits is threatened by shade tree diseases, and it is the city's responsibility to control and prevent the spread of these diseases. If the city deems it necessary to remove a diseased tree on private property, the property owners have three options available. One, remove the tree themselves. Two, hire and pay for their own contractor to remove the tree. Or, three, hire their own contractor and request the cost of the tree removal be assessed against their property tax. In addition to the above scenario, a number of properties included in this year's assessment are residents who voluntarily use the city's EAB Removal Assistance Program. The owners of these properties either one, asked the city to assess their 25% cost share for their ash removals to their property taxes, or two, failed to, or choose, or chose not to pay the city their 25% cost share after three statements were sent and they were made aware of the charge would be placed onto their property taxes. In the period from January 1st, 2023, through December 31, 2023, 44 property owners chose to assess or were designated for assessment, and four property owners have since paid off their entire balance. The total amount to be assessed is currently $89,915.47 across 40 properties. We'll now open the public hearing on this. The staff could put the call-in number up there on the screen. Is there anybody in the room that would like to speak about the trees? Okay. Seeing none, close the public hearing. And I'm asking by motion to adopt a, oh, I'm sorry, make a motion to close the public hearing, I'm sorry.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor of closing the public hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The public hearing is closed.
Okay, now we will make a, adopt a resolution for special assessments for removal of diseased trees from private property for work ordered from January 1st, 2023, through December 31st, 2023. Is there a motion?
All right, so you've made the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, we have approved that resolution. Next, we'll move on to item number six. Councilmember Christiansen.
Thank you. This is to adopt a resolution for special assessments for removal of diseased trees from private property for work ordered from January 1st, 2023, through December 31st, 2023. The health of trees within municipal limits is threatened by shade tree diseases, and it is the city's responsibility to control and prevent the spread of these diseases. If the city deems it necessary to remove a diseased tree on private property, the property owners have three options available. One, remove the tree themselves. Two, hire and pay for their own contractor to remove the tree. Or, three, hire their own contractor and request the cost of the tree removal be assessed against their property tax. In addition to the above scenario, a number of properties included in this year's assessment are residents who voluntarily use the city's EAB Removal Assistance Program. The owners of these properties either one, asked the city to assess their 25% cost share for their ash removals to their property taxes, or two, failed to, or choose, or chose not to pay the city their 25% cost share after three statements were sent and they were made aware of the charge would be placed onto their property taxes. In the period from January 1st, 2023, through December 31, 2023, 44 property owners chose to assess or were designated for assessment, and four property owners have since paid off their entire balance. The total amount to be assessed is currently $89,915.47 across 40 properties. We'll now open the public hearing on this. The staff could put the call-in number up there on the screen. Is there anybody in the room that would like to speak about the trees? Okay. Seeing none, close the public hearing. And I'm asking by motion to adopt a, oh, I'm sorry, make a motion to close the public hearing, I'm sorry.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor of closing the public hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The public hearing is closed.
Okay, now we will make a, adopt a resolution for special assessments for removal of diseased trees from private property for work ordered from January 1st, 2023, through December 31st, 2023. Is there a motion?
All right, so you've made the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
I guess.
Go ahead.
Just for anyone listening, some of these are, you know, unpaid fees, but just to make sure people are aware, if you have a diseased or dying tree that you need to remove, this program is an opportunity that if you cannot pay that all at once, the city can spread it out over a few years through your property taxes. And so, just want to make sure folks are aware of that. We certainly continue to have particularly ash trees, but more and more trees that are dying in the community.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We've passed the special assessment. Next, we'll move on to item number seven. Councilmember Troutman.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number seven is to hold a public hearing and consider a resolution adopting the assessment of the ILN project area for $81,615.90, or excuse me, .59 cents in costs incurred to maintain the area for 2023, and a resolution ordering the undertaking of the current service project within the INL project area for 2025. And so, this is a public hearing, and I understand we have at least one resident from the community who would like to address the council, so would invite them and anybody else to come on up?
You can come up there and give us your name and address, please, and then you have three minutes to address the council.
I'm Patricia Erickson, I'm the owner of Viking Paints. We own two properties in Richfield that are but, the frontage road on 494, this project is on 77th Street. I'm just saying that this improvement doesn't benefit our business, and I talked to one of your city employees, and he said to just come and ask if we could be removed from the area. We pay $63,000 a year in property taxes for those two businesses. I just think this is a little excessive. My notice says you spent $85,954. You just read that you spent $81,615. Clarification?
All right, after we close the public hearing, can we get clarification?
Absolutely.
Okay.
So, we want to give you the balance of your time, and so, and I'll ask the, our attorney, the proper order of things is to let her speak for three minutes, and then close the hearing, and then have staff address the concerns. So, can you just ask your question one more time, and just so we're sure we can respond to it?
Okay. My request is that you remove the two properties, 77, 21 Pillsbury Avenue, and 100 West 78th Street, from the area for the special assessment.
Very good. Thank you.
When can I expect a response?
We'll be voting on it momentarily, and so, this is the opportunity for any member of the public to speak to the issue. I understand, you of all people are the most passionate about this issue, but it's open to the public, so anybody from the public could come in and speak to the issue.
Because I just question that this 77th Street benefits our property when we're a block away from 77th Street. We don't even use it.
Very good, thank you. And just for reference for everybody, the INL project area assessment was established to recover special maintenance expenses in the 77th Street area in 1988, and the current services include maintenance and operation of irrigation systems, weed control, mowing, fertilization, trash, and litter removal, replantings, and noise wall maintenance. And these current services are provided on both sides of the 77th Street noise wall, and the maintenance and functions are funded through the maintenance assessment on 77th Street commercial properties, of which we had one property owner come and speak. This is a public hearing. City Clerk, do we have anybody that's called in?
No, we do not right now.
All right, anybody else that would like to speak? All right, then I would move that we close our public hearing.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to close the public hearing. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, and then, Councilmember Troutman?
Thank you. Before we move to the, to the motion, does staff have anything to add?
Thank you, Councilmember. I did receive a question on this, and from Councilmember Hayford O'Leary, and I just wanted to share the information with everyone. Councilmember had asked about planting trees along the corridor, and we do plan on replacing some of the trees around, along the corridor next year. We also are looking at updating that landscaping and coming up with a plan for it, however, we're waiting on that for a couple reasons. We've got two federal grants that we're applying for, and so, we want to see if we get those grants, and that would impact any landscaping plan. And then, also, the 494 project will impact the corridor as well, and so, want to wait until there's more progress on that project. And then, finally, a landscape plan would involve updating that irrigation system, and so, that would likely be done over two years, because it would be, it would be more costly than the normal maintenance on the corridor.
All right, Councilmember Whalen?
Thank you, Mayor. Two comments. One, just wanted to address the question about the discrepancy in numbers. The assessment costs for services, was that $85,000 number? But four properties have already paid their assessments, and so, the amount that is getting assessed is $81,615.59. That's in the more detailed packet. And then, I wanted to, also in the more detailed packet is at least the last 20 years of history on this, and this cost is higher than usual. My guess is there, similar to our last item, there were a lot of dead ash trees in that area. Was that the primary cause this year for the, that year for the higher costs?
Mayor, members of the council, there were two items that raised costs. One was, as you mentioned, the removal of ash trees, and there was damage to the wall due to an accident, which raised the cost this year.
Thank you. And then, my last thought is just that I would agree with the original intent and geography of this district, that I know there's some frontage roads, this includes properties that are closer to 76, some that are closer to 77, or 78, I mean, but with 77 being the primary corridor to access those, I continue to think that it's appropriate that all the businesses in this corridor are contributing toward the upkeep.
Did staff have any input on the question that was raised by the resident?
Again, when this district was created, it was meant for the commercial properties in that area. Again, as Councilmember Whalen stated, the access is from somebody 7th Street for all of those properties, and it's just to cover those costs for maintenance of that corridor.
Councilmember Troutman?
Thank you, Mayor. I just had a question for staff. For, I know for residential areas, we don't do assessments like this. I wondered, is this the only part of Richfield where we have assessments that are assessed directly to, to, you know, the businesses? Are there other business districts where we have similar kinds of assessments?
Yes, this is the only one right now. We used to have the hub maintenance district because of reconstructions and everything kind of changing over the years, we did abandon that maintenance district.
Thank you. And then, the last question. With other assessments for residents, we have mechanisms to finance those, and space those payments out. Do we have similar options for businesses? If they, they need, you know, the time value of money to pay the assessments, or do the assessments do all at once?
I'm not aware of any at this time. You know, I'm the working side of this one, to get the work done, but I'm not aware of any at this point.
Councilmember Troutman, I just did want to say that it looks like the assessed value for the person who's spoken to us is about $1,300, which is a pretty small fraction compared to the property tax bill. I will just say, although I'm certainly sympathetic, that there's a lot of things I don't like about 77th, but I do think our maintenance of our landscaping is important, and this was the deal, this was the deal when the property was purchased, and I agree with Councilmember Whalen that exempting one specific business wouldn't really be fair to the others who are paying into the district.
I agree.
Would staff be available after we vote on this if the resident had a specific question about their assessment? Because I know there's a detailed list in the big packet, but I don't know if that's something.
Yes, yes, I'll be available.
All right, thank you. Any other questions, comments? Councilmember Troutman?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to address the business owner particularly, because you came here and you asked a question, even though- and you asked a question, even though Councilmember Heyford O'Leary also asked that. I'm sympathetic that nobody wants to pay fees or assessments, you know, in, in any circumstance. But to be one business that didn't have to pay when your neighbors did have to pay is not something that, that I would, I would support. But I, I certainly don't, don't think it's wrong that you came and asked and asked for clarity and even asked for clarity about things like, well, there's this $4,000 difference from what I'm seeing and what I'm understanding. And so hopefully you got some of your answers, even though you didn't get the answer you were looking for. Technically not, unfortunately. But, but I'll be around here after, after the council meeting. I won't duck you. So if you'd like to chat, I'm, I'm glad to chat.
And the staff member said he would talk with you out in the hall and go through some specifics.
So, so with that, I, I'll I have to scroll up to make the motion. Sorry, folks.
You didn't memorize it, Councilman?
I did not memorize it.
Page 110.
110, thank you. I would move we adopt a resolution adopting the assessment on the ILN project area for $81,008, or excuse me, $81,615.59 in costs incurred to maintain the area for 2023. City Attorney, can we do both in one motion?
Yes, I think that's fine.
Thank you. And adopt a resolution ordering the undertaking of the current service project within the ILN project area for 2025.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And we have adopted both resolutions. We have one more resolution, and then it's come to my attention that we missed two presentations. So without objection, we'll go to those after this next public hearing. So our next public hearing is item number eight, and I'll turn that over to Councilmember Whalen.
Thank you, Mayor. This is another, in our final, public hearing in consideration of a resolution adopting the proposed assessments of delinquent utility accounts, false alarm charges, public health or safety hazards charges, weed eradication charges, and vacant property registration fees to be certified to property taxes. Minnesota State Statutes 444.075, 429.101, and 429.061 provide that certain unpaid charges may be assessed against the benefiting property. Chapter seven of the Richfield Code of Ordinances provide that unpaid water, sanitary sewer, storm sewer, and streetlight charges may be certified to the county auditor to be included in a property owner's annual property tax bill. Section 925.02 subdivision five, section 915.07 subdivision three, and chapter 8.02 of the city charter provide that the city is allowed to specially assess delinquent fees. City code also authorizes a certification fee to be charged against each delinquent account. By certifying the delinquent charges to the property taxes, the city is assured of collection of the charges. The delinquent accounts must be certified to the county auditor in order for the city to collect the charges through the property tax payment process. Property owners have been notified that any unpaid charges or fees may be assessed against their property. Does staff have anything to add on this item? All right, then I would open the public hearing for this item. Is there anyone here to speak to this item? We'll give people a couple of minutes if they were calling in. If staff could remind us again the process if folks want to pay this off before it gets assessed?
They can pay at the utility desk in cash or check.
By what date?
The, the 12th? November 12th.
November 12th.
November 12th. Thank you. I'm not seeing anyone in person or calling in to speak to this item. I'd move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to close the public hearing. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The public hearing is closed.
Then I would make a motion that we approve the attached resolution authorizing certification of unpaid water, sanitary sewer, storm sewer, and streetlight charges, false alarm charges, public health or safety hazard charges, weed eradication charges, and vacant property registration fees to the county auditor to be collected with other taxes on said properties.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And we have approved the attached resolutions. Thank you. Now, without objection, we're going to move to a presentation by the Community Services Commission. And so we'll welcome the chair of that commission. Oh, go ahead.
Mayor, I believe you need an amendment to amend the agenda, and I also wanted to express my, my apologies. We had two presentations tonight. We had a presentation for the Community Services Commission, and it's Tessa Johansson. So I apologize for missing that on the agenda that was it is on the online agenda, but it is not on the agenda that was pulled up on your, on your computers. And then we have a, a presentation from the Advisory Board of Health, which is, I believe Jennifer Anderson is here to present.
So I would, a motion would be in order to amend the agenda to allow these two presentations.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor of amending the agenda to add these two presentations, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, we've added those. Welcome Chair Johansson, and you can come up, and the floor is yours. Thank you.
Hello, glad to be here again. This past year has been another busy one for the Community Services Commission. For those that might not be familiar, our commission is a little bit unique in that we have liaisons that work with all of the other commissions. So that means the Planning, Arts, and Sustainability Commissions, along with Friends of Woodlake Board, Transportation Committee. And so we tend to receive regular reports from those areas. But for our own work, we have covered quite a bit of ground. So last, over the past year, we received regular project updates about the new Taft Bike Park, which opened last October. Also, the Augsburg Skate Park Expansion Project, which reopened in August. And the new Splash Pad, which is scheduled to open for the 2025 season. And the Woodlake Nature Center Building Project, which is scheduled to begin next year as well. We also assisted with grading proposals for new playground equipment at Fairwood Park. We used criteria based on the neighborhood feedback sessions in 2023. We also discussed project options for the upcoming local sales tax referendum, received updates about information sessions, open houses, and facility tours. We provided feedback regarding plans to replace the main building at Donaldson Park in 2026, prioritized proposed capital projects, and recommended city council approval of the 2025 Parks Recreation and Open Space Capital Improvement Budget, and the 2026 through 2029 Capital Improvement Plan. We also reviewed plans and policies for the revamped Recreation Fee Assistance Program, which saw $13,000 in donation funds utilized by qualifying Richfield households to assist with paying for activity fees. I know that program was really popular with our commission, and it sounds like the community as well. So that was really great to hear. We also met jointly with the Sustainability Commission to hear presentations from Public Works, including the city's Stormwater Pond Priority Plan, which is fascinating. So, well done there. And then the Richfield Bloomington Watershed Management Organization Report, Forestry Update, and a Parks Maintenance Project Update. We also reviewed the partnership with Richfield Public Schools to prepare and groom a cross-country ski trail in Augsburg Park. We provided guidance and feedback to staff regarding the Roundup for Richfield Parks Program at the Richfield Liquor Stores. In 2024, $1,100 was raised to benefit the New Recreation Fee Assistance Program Fund. And funds are currently being raised in the final quarter of the year to purchase new features for the Roosevelt Off Leash Dog Park. We received updates on the new agreement with Minneapolis Hockey for the lease of Ice Time at the Richfield Ice Arena. And we also appointed new and returning members to the Friends of Woodlake Board. And then, just in the coming year, we also plan to continue prioritizing capital improvement items, continuing to hear regular reports from staff and other commissions, and provide feedback and guidance on approved capital projects, including the Woodlake Building Project, the Play Equipment Replacement Schedule, and other projects. So all in all, a really good year.
Thank you so much. Do we have any questions? Or comments? I know Councilmember Whalen, you've been the liaison.
Yeah, I just, it has been a lot. And I know I've had to miss a couple of meetings, but thank you. I think the only other thing I'd add that's been kind of fun is the, the commission has been meeting at some of the new buildings for rent in our parks. And so if you, for anyone listening, if you hadn't heard, we are, some of, more of the buildings that can hold, you know, a group of 15 to 30 people or so are available for rent. I know people have been asking for community meeting spaces. And I, well, I guess I won't cramp on your style. Maybe you would host a wedding there. But certainly you could host a birthday party or a, a smaller event with family or friends. And so would encourage others to check those out as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
One thing I did want to add, we had the Boys Scout troop visit us earlier today, and they were asking their favorite things in Richfield, and the parks came up a lot. So good kudos to the commission.
That's good news. Thank you for sharing.
All right. Next, we'll have the Advisory Board of Health.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Jennifer Anderson. I'm the staff liaison for the Advisory Board of Health. Unfortunately, our chair could not be with us tonight, so you get me instead. It's, I can't believe we're here talking about 2024 already. It just seems like we were talking about 2023. The Advisory Board meets January through May, and then September and October for seven months of the year. There's been a lot of fluctuation in numbers on our commission. People moving out of the city, people moving into the city. For whatever reason, we had a couple who had to drop off. So at this point, we have five members. We're hoping to recruit two more during this recruiting season. And then we are also hoping for two youth. We have not had youth members on our commission, I think, since 2019, and for whatever reason. So we're hoping to, to have some young perspectives join us. With that churn, churn and turnover, there's a lot of kind of stopping and starting, a lot of onboarding, bringing people current to what the, the commission does. And so they took kind of a step back, reviewed the bylaws this year, which hadn't been amended since 2004. So there was some cleanup there. We officially reduced the number of members on the commission from 11 down to nine, and that nine includes the two youth members. Cannabis was also a big topic this year. And the, the Advisory Board is, is learning, along with everybody else, policies, health, potential health policies that could be coming in the future. The three advisory boards, Bloomington, Edina, and Richfield, met in May, and cannabis was the focus of that meeting as well. They learned quite a bit about cannabis research that's taking place at the University of Minnesota, and how that research is going to be impacting how locals are experiencing cannabis once that becomes online in 2025. There was a request by the commission to tour the police department, so they did that as well. They got a, an in-depth look at our PD one evening. And then they heard a presentation by the Richfield Health Resource Center, which is housed within the high school. And there was a lot of support on the part of the Advisory Board for that service. I think that we weren't able to actually go tour the, the Resource Center, but I think that's going to be a priority in 2025, in trying to figure out how that group can, can support and lift up what they're doing for kids and young adults in the community. Penfest. They were back at Penfest this year, the first time since 2019. COVID really put a, a dent in participation, but there was interest again from the group. And we had a lot of interest. There was a lot of information and resources provided, everything from cannabis prevention, education materials. I think the biggest, the biggest public health focus that day was on the Adopt a Drain Program. We've got a, an advisory board member who's very active in that, and she had her Home Depot buckets on the table, and people were excited about adopting a drain across the city. So it was good to, good to be back out in the community. And then typically, planning for the following year happens in October. Sometimes it spills over into January. So like I said, I, I would expect probably some cannabis policy changes coming forth. There's a lot of, a lot of research going into how can cities regulate cannabis, much like they do tobacco. So that is what the Advisory Board of Health has been up to in 2024.
Thank you, and thank you to everyone who serves on the commission. Councilmember Troutman, did you want to add anything as liaison? I think I've had a lot going on this year. Next, we'll move on our, in our agenda to adoption of the, or consider the adoption of a resolution for County State Aid Highway 52 or Nicolet Avenue. And I'll turn that over to Councilmember Heyford O'Leary.
Thank you. Yes, this item is for the Nicolet Avenue Preferred Concept from 77th to 66th. I believe we'll have a presentation forthcoming. But just to briefly read the executive summary, Hennepin County has planned for a full reconstruction of Nicolet Avenue for 2026. Public engagement and outreach began in August 2023 and consisted of four phases of engagement, following Richfield's public engagement policy for public works projects. Project team also presented to the Transportation Commission five times over that period for feedback and direction. Transportation Commission voted unanimously at their September 4th meeting to recommend the preferred concept to the city council. Staff presented on the preferred concept and the current cost estimate, including the city's anticipated cost share at a work session on September 24th. And I will turn it over to staff for them to present.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. My name is Matt Hardiger. I'm the transportation engineer for the city. Just give a brief overview of the project. This will be a very similar presentation to what the council saw at the work session two weeks ago, with a little bit more detail in some areas. So the project area for this project, it's a Hennepin County project, as was mentioned in the executive summary. It will be on Nicolet Avenue from 77th Street to 66th Street. That road was originally constructed in 1961. It was last fully milling and overlaid in around, in 2014. That was when the road was restriped from four lanes to three, current configuration that you see today. In 2018, there was a Centerpoint Gas Main project that went through the northbound lane. There was, that lane was reconstructed, and there was also some spot pavement rehabilitation that was done. And in 2020, there was a pedestrian safety project done to add the median refuges that are at 71st Street, 72nd Street, and 73rd Street. That's where we are today. There's an image on the right side of this screen that shows the, the difference between the corridor in 2012 and the corridor today, right outside of Augsburg Library. The project is anticipated to be a two-year project from 2026 and 2027. There may be some private utility relocation work that may begin as early as 2025, but that's to be determined at a later date. The county was gracious enough to follow Richfield's public engagement plan through this project. So from August 2023 through September 2024, there were four phases that consisted of four open houses, four pop-up events, five Transportation Commission meetings, and around 900 touch points with the community, with individuals in the community. This project was also developed using all of the existing plans and policies that the city has for transportation projects, including the Guiding Principles, our Complete Streets Policy, the Bicycle Master Plan, Pedestrian Master Plan, and the Active Transportation Action Plan. And this project would achieve goals that are laid out in each one of those documents. The design features of the Preferred Concept, which was included in the packet, for vehicles, it contains a three-lane section that reduces the curb-to-curb width from the existing 51 feet to 35 feet. There's a one-way separated bike path on each side of the road. And there will be rectangular rapid And there will be rectangular rapid flashing beacons, or RFBs, the flashing yellow pedestrian lights at several intersections. A good local comparison of what the ultimate design of the project would look like is 66th Street east of 12th Avenue, where you have the travel, the three-lane section with a buffer to the cycle track and the sidewalk with pedestrian lighting, as shown in the image. As we went through public engagement, one of the other aspects that was included in the design are compact roundabouts. So, roundabouts are preferred as a, for a safety feature for these intersections, because they reduce the number of conflict points for vehicles and pedestrians. At a signalized intersection, you have thirty-two conflict points where cars may hit each other. A roundabout reduces that down to eight and removes the most serious potential conflict points. There's a lower overall crash rate for single-lane roundabouts in a signalized intersection, as well as a significantly lower fatal crash rate for single-lane roundabouts versus signalized intersections. When the project team also modeled the travel time from end to end of the corridor, their analysis concluded that it would actually reduce vehicle delay and, or reduce travel time from 77th to 66th Street for a vehicle due to less waiting at signals that were, you were the only car waiting for a red light to change. A local comparison for this would be the roundabouts on Lindale Avenue. The roundabouts that are proposed are four-legged instead of three, but they are roughly the same size as the existing roundabouts on Lindale Avenue. Another feature that was included were right-in, right-out intersections. So, similar to roundabouts, this reduces the conflict points at the intersection as a safety measure. A two-way stop sign, like a signal, has thirty-two potential conflict points. A right-in, right-out intersection has four. It also creates a median stopping point for pedestrians and reduces crash rates by twenty-three percent from a two-way left-turn lane. We did get a lot of feedback on these, because they are relatively new to the community. There was not a, there were questions about access and what the purpose of these were. One of the, we do have a few examples of this within the, within Richfield today. There are about five on 66th Street, as well as Lake Shore Drive, where Lake Shore Drive meets Lindale Avenue. One of the biggest questions that we received with these is driveway access. If the median was directly in front of a driveway, would that, how would that affect a resident's ability to get in and out of their driveway? The answer is, it would. If you were coming from one direction, you would not be able, one, either northbound or southbound along the road, you would not be able to turn left into your driveway. For this project, that, there are about twenty driveways, either from the right-in, right-out medians, the roundabout splitter islands, or the left-turn refuges that are included, that would have access removed from one direction. Part of the benefit of having roundabouts in a case like this is that a U-turn can be made relatively easily, usually within a block or two, in order to come from that other direction. The other aspect is that once you start to learn what, how to get to and from a location, it gets easier at the first few weeks. Obviously, there will be a learning curve for anyone who is affected. This is similar to previous projects that have been done in Richfield. Lindale Avenue had eighteen driveways where left-turn access was removed, and 66th Street had twenty-one driveways where left-turn access was removed. And that also, there were also three alleys where left-turn access was removed. One of the other safety features that this project is intending, is proposing, is raised crosswalks. So, pedestrians and bicyclists cross at sidewalk level instead of the street level, which increases visibility for everyone, and also provides a traffic calming effect that reinforces the stop sign. I did not include this in the presentation. I apologize for that. These intersections would also have bumpouts that move the curb into the intersection and shorten the crossing distance as well. And as was discussed at the work session, but has not been incorporated into the layout that was within the packet, those bumpouts would have sidewalk connections up to the, the corners. So, overall, the project benefits for pedestrians, it's improved sidewalks and lighting. There is more buffer to the vehicle lanes, where currently there is no buffer to the vehicle lanes. More planting and trees, more median refuges, and shorter crossing distances. Bicyclists, also, there is a buffered bike lane that provides an all-ages, all-abilities facility, and those raised crossings add additional safety and comfort for riders. For transit riders, this project will improve bus stops and reduce delay at intersections for residents who are riding the bus. For drivers, there's also reduced delay at intersections, and T-bone crash potential is removed or greatly reduced at seven out of the ten intersections within the corridor. Similarly, that benefits our emergency services, who do not have, who will have a reduced potential to have to respond to those serious and fatal accidents, as they will have much lower potential for those to occur. And it also benefits the environment with more green space allowed, meaning for additional water treatment and more space for plantings. From a budget perspective, the total estimated project cost right now is about 28.1 million. That estimate will fluctuate between now and 2026, as design details are finalized. The current estimate of the city cost share is about 14.4 million, based on the county's cost share policy. That includes 7.2 million dollars for roadway and storm sewer and 7.2 million dollars for city utilities. The council direction from the September 24th work session was to proceed with the preferred roadway concept and look for cost savings in utility constructions. Staff have been able to have a preliminary look at those at this point. And our current plan is to look at removing, or doing the sanitary sewer work outside of the project and lining it, which would potentially be a cost savings to the project of roughly two to three million dollars. The water main work would need to still be done at some point during the project. The two different options that were, were discussed at the work session, either lining the sand, lining the water main or full replacement of the water main are roughly cost equivalent. The difference ends up being a risk to the existing facilities while construction is going on. So, there's more work to be done on both of those options to determine what is feasible, but preliminarily, that's what we are looking at. The staff recommendation, similar to the transportation, or, as was mentioned earlier, the Transportation Commission did unanimously recommend that the City Council approve this concept. Staff is also recommending that the preferred concept is approved. The proposed design increases safety for all users, reduces vehicle delay, creates a more inviting streetscape and roadway for the community, and meets city goals outlined in all of our planning documents and policies. So, thank you, Mayor and Council, for the chance to present. I will be available for any questions that you have.
I have some general comments on the project, but if other council members have questions for staff.
I was wondering just what the next, next steps are, if we approve this resolution. What happens after this?
Thank you, Mayor. The next step for the project would be to move into the final design process, where actually, plans are developed for construction. I believe there is potentially some action that the County Board would need to take as well. Is that correct? So, yeah. No action that the County Board would need to take. They would just move into their final design phase.
And then that's when they would talk, like, get easements and all those types of things?
Yes.
So, anybody that lives along the corridor will be hearing from the, the people that are working on the project then?
That's correct. And some of that contact has already been made, but it will be, continue to be made now, as the project would move forward.
All right. Councilmember Wayland?
Thank you, Mayor. Just for anyone who wasn't listening, doesn't have the time to listen to the full work session, the, just a little bit of explanation on the, the direction that council gave, and I, I don't think I'm speaking out of turn, we were relatively in agreement, that the proposed cost savings options to, for changes to the roadway design, the, we would have to remove things that were pretty critical to what the public was asking for through the public input process, and it would not create that much of a cost savings. Whereas on the utility side, I know, I and I believe other council members received some feedback of surprise that we would talk about spending less on the utilities when those are so essential. But I, I guess my question then, that I'm fairly certain I know the answer to, but just want to confirm that, I know it's still in process, but if the, if the decision was to line instead of replace the sanitary sewer, that that is, that process is as good as new. That is not a, a downgrade in quality, correct?
Hi, Councilmember Wayland. Joe Powers, City Engineer. Yeah, you're essentially correct in that lining a sanitary sewer essentially restores the pipe to, like, new condition. We anticipate, lining's still a relatively new technology in the last half-century or so. But generally, that brings a pipe back to lifespan of anywhere between fifty to a hundred years.
Thank you. So, yes, just again, appreciate staff looking into that, particularly if the savings are in multiple millions of dollars. That obviously is very helpful for making sure we can pay for the project. So, thank you for your work on that, and just wanted to explain it for residents.
Councilmember Hayford O'Leary?
Well, first off, one minor item. I just want to be sure that was memorialized from the work session, that, assuming the county will allow us to do so, that there was openness to paying for crosswalk markings to remain at 71st Street. Staff did make a note of that, correct?
Yes, staff did note that.
Okay. And it's certainly helpful that the county will allow us to re-mark the existing marked crosswalk at our own expense. I believe that is the case.
Okay. I do want to just say in general, you know, I've, I've been at every meeting of this project. I've watched the Transportation Commission go through this. I will certainly be voting to support this tonight, and I'm really proud of what we've done. When we had our candidate forum last weekend, I talked about how Richfield doesn't rest on its laurels, and we're not just content to, to keep doing the same old thing. And to some people, maybe this looks kind of similar to 66, but in a lot of important subtle ways, this has improved.
And I'm really proud of that. It's, it's better than Portland. It's better than 66, but it's probably not as good as the next project will do. And that's kind of comforting, that we're always striving for better. The only sort of major regret I want to note that I have, especially since we have our wonderful county team here, there's a significant cost difference that we're bearing, as Richfield, specifically because we're doing a better street. We are paying significantly more money to do protected bike lanes, even though it's something the county supports, even though it's something the county promotes doing on their roadways. And we're paying half the, half that cost difference. That is a significant financial disincentive to creating a safer, better street. And I think it's unfortunate that the current county cost share policy, and I certainly tell this to our elected officials too at the county, I think it's unfortunate that the cost share policy causes cities that are, have tight budgets, to give them a reason to not want a safer bikeway. So, I really hope that can be revised in the future. I hope it can be revised in time for our next collaboration with the county. But really, you know, that aside, I, I really am, I'm impressed with this project. I'm, I'm proud of where it's headed. And, yeah, I'm happy to support it. And then one other thing, just for our, our city benefit, it's a little bit of an aside, but I did have to note, the narrowing of the street, which is going to feel really significant, and hopefully will slow down cars. At thirty-five feet, Nicolet Avenue, which carries almost 10,000 cars a day, will actually be narrower than my own residential street that is, carries 100 cars a day. So, it does make me wonder if we really need such wide streets when a, a 10,000-car-a-day road is, only needs to be 35 feet. So, thank you.
I also wanted to, this is Mayor Supple, I wanted to thank the public for all of their input. Our council packet has over 100 pages of feedback and comments from the public that whether they wrote something out, whether they came to an open house. And so, this has been a very robust feedback policy or program. And so, I think it starts on page 151 and goes to page 260. So, that's a significant amount of feedback that we've received. And I know people felt that their voices were heard, even if sometimes it didn't come out the way they were advocating for. It was good that everybody had a, a chance to have the full discussion. And I want to thank everybody who participated in any of the open houses, who mailed in feedback or participated in any way. Thank you. Councilmember Troutman?
Thank you, Mayor. And I, I would just add to that, it, it was, it was great. We had a group of, of scouts in the City Council here just before, just before the, the council session here. And one of the things that the parents commented on, and even one of the scouts commented on, was the ability to be able to walk and bike around the city of Richfield safely. And I remember growing up with what 66 used to be. And I've now raised two, two young, young people on our streets now. And it really impacts the quality of our life. And I know what it felt like to grow up in Richfield when our streets and our underpasses looked terrible and shabby. And the impact that that had, when you live in a place that other people think is, is less than and doesn't look as, it, it has an impact on people too. And so, I'm grateful to support this and thankful for all the volunteers and all the staff time that has been put in the vision of our Transportation Director over the years to, to make this city better, and the investment we have to make collectively to make it better. It's the fruit of a lot of planning and a lot of will that includes our residents and includes our staff. So, thank you to everybody.
All right. I will make the motion to adopt a resolution supporting the County State Aid Highway 52, Nicolet Avenue Preferred Concept from 77th Street to 66th Street, as recommended by the Transportation Commission.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any further comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right. Thank you to everyone involved with this. We've adopted the resolution. Moving along, we'll go on to the City Manager's Report.
Thank you, Mayor. At our last meeting, Heidi Gabor spoke at the open forum, and she had concerns about past maintenance of park and recreation assets. And she also wants to keep the Community Center building and use all other smaller park buildings. In response, I just wanted to note a few things. Most cities struggle to keep up with infrastructure needs, especially cities like Richfield that built out very quickly in the sixties. The, the liquor store profits have been used to keep these aging assets functional, but at a certain point, they just need to be rehabilitated or rebuilt. Staff have been, and we will continue to assess the condition of these assets, prioritize them based on the recreation needs, and then also come up with funding plans. We have assessed the Community Center, and the initial estimate is that it would be $10 million to address just the basic structural needs. And then the building wouldn't accommodate the modern programming that we're hearing from residents that they want. Also, the, the multiple buildings that are in many of our parks, we are looking at what we can do with them, but those also are expensive to rehab and could not accommodate the kind of programming that we're hearing residents want. And also, we'd, we'd have to staff those buildings too. So, having staff dispersed at multiple smaller buildings would be more costly for operations than just having a larger building. So, staff's plan was, you know, recommended to the council. The council approved it, and now it's going to the voters. If that plan for the Community Center does not pass, then we would come back to the council, and the financing would likely include rehabilitation with property taxes. I also have an announcement. We, we've had very few people join the open forum via WebEx, and it takes an additional staff person to run that WebEx for the open forum. So, we're planning, starting in November, to only offer the WebEx for people to join if they give us advance notice, and we'll set it up for them. And we will communicate that in the weeks prior, and then also add it to the accessibility language on the website. And that's all I have for my report tonight.
Thank you. Next, we will move on to the Claims and Payroll.
I'll move Claims and Payroll.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Claims and Payroll. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Claims and payroll are approved. Moving along to hats off to hometown hits, and we'll do it differently this time and go straight to Councilmember Hayford O'Leary.
I never have first.
That's what I'm saying.
I know. I guess I will just, just thank the legal women voters for the forum last weekend. It was a good chance to discuss. We also got to see our, our state representative, who's running for reelection, talk about some state issues. Yeah, and it was just, it's fun to meet the fellow candidates. And because it is kind of a, a narrow race with two wars uncontested, three of the four people you saw up there will be right here in January. So, yeah. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Troutman?
Nothing tonight.
All right, Councilmember Christensen.
Yes, this Saturday provides a number of things in the community for residents to, to do. One would be at Fairwood Park. From 10:00 a.m. till noon is the Great American Pumpkin Giveaway. And there'll be lots of games and coloring contests and pumpkins that are donated to each family and, you know, things like that. And then also in the afternoon, there's the Community Trunk or Treat event held at the Morris Nielsen Funeral Home